We want to call the meeting of the Frankfurt-Franklin County Planning Commission to order. Welcome all of you here. I hope that your trip is rewarded with whatever it is you sought it to be. Meantime, we'll ask the Secretary to call the room, please.
Catherine Bennett.
Here.
David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross.
Here.
Joyce Honaker.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Timothy Lusher.
Here.
Jim Nichol.
Charles Stewart.
Here.
Jim Terrell.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Sharon Jackson.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
So we've got 10?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You received in the mail the minutes from the last meeting. It was your pleasure.
Please approve the minutes. Second.
Move properly second that the minutes from the previous meeting be approved. Is there a discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion on the payment of bills.
So moved.
Second.
Move properly second that the bills that's submitted by staff be paid. Is there a discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. Reports of officers? Reports of standing committees? Reports of special select committees?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Chairman, the nominated committee of officers for next year met, and I spoke to two or three, and they are in agreement to serve again. The nominated committee would like to nominate three existing officers. Mr. Sharon Jackson as the chairman, Mr. Jim Nichol as vice chairman, and Ms. Kate Bennett as secretary of treasurer for the 2020 county.
Move properly second. You've heard the slate of officers proposed by the nominating committee. The rules also state that there may be nominations from the floor. Does any commissioner have a nomination for either of the three offices that they wish to submit? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of the motion submitted by the nominating committee, please vote aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. I'm sure that we three, one of which is absent at the moment, all appreciate your confidence in asking us to serve again in the ensuing year. Given the agenda that we have, we'll save our campaign speeches to the last. Are there special orders? Because I'll be serving as chairman and the agenda that we're facing, I want to delay the identification of the Comprehensive Plan Oversight Committee until the next meeting unless we finish real early this evening. Are there other staff items? Then, Madam Secretary, if you would, call the first item under "Old Business."
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Tierney Storage LLC is requesting approval of a zone map amendment from Agricultural District AG to Industrial General District IG for an 85.388 acre portion of property located in Franklin County identified as a portion of tract 1, 84.058 acres, and a portion of tract 2, 1.1331 acres, located at 690 Duncan Road. The property is more specifically identified as a portion of PVA map number 087-00-00-031.00, tract 1, and a portion of PVA map number 087-00-00-031.01, tract 2, and this is a county item.
Each member of the commission who attended, well, each member of the commission should have received a packet that contained the meeting materials from the previous meeting plus information related to consequential submissions by attendees at the last meeting regarding proposed finding of fact. All of those pieces of information should have been in your agenda. Just a couple of housekeeping things before we proceed, and that is that as our bylaws and our rules indicate, only those individuals who were in attendance at the public hearing and any individual on the commission who listened to the official tapes from the previous meeting may participate in the determination regarding item one. Mr. Logan, have I stated that properly?
Yes, sir.
So at this point in time, there were only six commissioners present at the last meeting. Of course, there was one commissioner who had indicated that they listened to, staff corroborated that they listened to, the official tape from the previous meeting, making that seven individuals who are eligible at this moment to participate in item one. Is there any other planning commission member who listened to the tape who wishes to participate in this decision? So there are seven votes with regard to this item.
One missing.
Beg your pardon?
One missing.
I don't think Mr. Nichol was at the last meeting.
Thank you. No.
Can you say who staff corroborated?
The staff corroborated that Ms. Cross.
Okay, just making sure.
Came to listen to the official tapes from the previous meeting. Now, if there's nothing further there, Chair will entertain a motion to remove the item from the table and at some point adopt the summary from the public hearing, the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee.
Make the motion that we remove the item from the table and adopt the summary into the record.
I'll second that motion.
Move and properly second that the item be removed from the table and that the summary of the testimony from the previous meeting be adopted. There a discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. At this point, the floor is open for the identification of findings of fact related to this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee.
I would like to, on page 14 of the staff report for this item, the six findings of fact, I would like to recommend, go six, go six, please.
There a second?
I'll second that motion.
Move and properly second that the commission adopt its findings of fact, the staff recommended finding in the staff report. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, you may ask a question.
My name is Susan Goddard, and I wanted to get a clarification, were there six pieces of finding of fact, or I want to make sure our finding of fact from our neighborhood association did get included. There was some question as to whether or not it was given to a reporter when she asked for it, and it was not included in the packet, so I wanted to make sure that it was a fact included in your packet, what you had before you, and the commissioners had a chance to review.
The findings that Mr. Lee offered up that got a second does not include your findings or the findings of the other individuals who submitted. That there's opportunity and time for that as we move on.
Oh, listen, and I want to, I just have a question, and I appreciate it, thank you.
So it might be appropriate, Madam Secretary, if you would read those six findings, so everyone understands what we're voting on.
Number one, the Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Plan, designates the property for employment center. Number two, the Industrial General Zone District is appropriate for the Employment Center land use designation. Number three, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet District 5, as well as the Planning Commission's traffic engineer, concur with the findings of the traffic study. The subject property is bound by industrial zoning to the east, west, and north within Franklin County. Number five, the subject property is adjacent to an established industrial park. Number six, the subject property is within one mile of Interstate 64 interchange.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Secretary, call the room.
Of the seven people only?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
And Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion on additional findings of fact. Now, that should be able to come from the communication that was submitted by the Historic Preservation Organization, the applicant envisioned Franklin County, and Ms. Bradshaw. And now, Ms. Goddard said that she submitted findings.
The letters in the court.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Do you take additional comments from the public tonight?
No, ma'am. Public hearing is closed.
I am a relative of the original owners of the house.
Okay, but the response is still the same. Public hearing is closed.
If Ms. Goddard has them, obviously, we submit them to the record, so we know we've got them for sure. Ms. Goddard, do you wish?
So, we just don't have a chance to look at them all.
We don't, I don't know, I'm just making sure you're getting the record.
I appreciate that. I did get, I did get a receipt back from Mr. Hewitt that they were received by the 30th, and that was your deadline, so I'm not sure as to why they're not included.
They may be included, I don't know. I don't recall which ones weren't, or but I want to make certain that I'll remember this. If you submitted them, they're included.
They are, and on several copies I ran, I believe, but the receipt is on the back. I'll pass the receipt.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy, I can just jump out and check, you know, I don't believe, I don't know whether they were or they weren't, I know they weren't.
The receipt is attached. I'll just take it.
Can I ask a clarification? From the original prescription that you read, I forget how, what you called it, where you talked about what the, where the land is, what borders the land, did you refer to the south side?
I think it was the east, west, and north.
Did you talk east, west, and north?
It was the east, west.
And do you consider the south side?
You reiterate, folks, in the Stanford report. The Stanford report noted that it's on the three sides, it did not specify the same that the industrial use was on the south.
On the south, yeah.
Could you repeat that, please?
The Stanford report only addressed the three sides that had industrial use. The south side doesn't have industrial use, so it wasn't included in those three that were designated as industrial use. That doesn't mean it wasn't considered, it just means it wasn't an industrial use.
Right. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
I guess I am confused. I live right next door to the farm, and they keep saying that industrial park borders three sides, but it only borders two, the back end, hand and left, so I don't understand.
Mr. Jackson, we've taken proof on this.
Yeah.
And reiterating additional statements now, it's not going to be appropriate in the record for anyone.
To add testimony. Correct. Okay. I beg your pardon?
May I ask the commissioners if they have ever seen our finding of facts document from our neighborhood association before tonight?
Can I ask a question, just to make sure, no, I have not, but just to ask a clarification. So this, this is not the neighborhood association's proposed findings of fact?
Yes, it is. I submitted it on behalf of the neighborhood as co-chair, or co-director.
You're asking, okay, so you're asking for it because it, the language, it says, whereas the Frankfurt-Franklin County Planning Commission finds that this proposed, where it would be located, it should be denied. So you're writing it, the neighborhood association, you on behalf of the neighborhood association wrote it like you were the planning commission, so in the, in the voice of the planning commission?
In the voice of the planning commission, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
We got it. The other commissioners who are not in possession of a copy of this would like to have a copy of it, there, can we get about three?
We're going through the packet of everything that was submitted, I don't know whether it was in some of them or not, but, yes, we've got that copy, so it should be circulating, just to make sure everyone has seen that.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask if Mr. Hewitt actually submitted the documentation to the council?
Sir, we're having a conversation with our attorney. Just bear with us for a minute.
I think they're asking that they need three more copies so that the additional people can see that.
But he's, he's checking to see if it's in the original packet.
Yeah, I don't know, but you've seen.
I got it.
There's a long list, I think you're going to see it.
Yes, sir. We can give you an explanation.
I think we're waiting for, there's copies that have been made.
We're going to have copies basically to look at. Apparently, it was received on the last day after the office was closed, so.
It's received at 4:31. Office was closed. So I have to say.
Apparently, this is allowed in the record. I think it should be, I think the commission had an abundance of considerations, should look at this and consider it. They've made an effort to get something before us, and I think the commission should review it. That's my recommendation.
Yeah.
We don't have an open motion.
I'd just declare it to be part of the packet. Can you take the fact that Mr. Hewitt?
Thank you.
It sounds like certain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we take this, we've just been passed the, from, what's it, from, the article from Mr. Randall A. Strombo, Lake Park League, on behalf of Susan Goddard, co-director Duncan Road, Giltock Mill Association. We adopt this, put this in the record, and that we take a five-minute recess for us to, everybody have the testimony, look at it, and review it. I think that's fair to the document, and that's my motion.
Second. Move properly second. Discussion. Discussion. There being none, all in favor, vote aye. The five-minute recess is already in order, so. We're going to call the commission meeting back to order, and the chair will continue to accept findings of fact, proposals for finding of fact.
Yes, Your Honor. I've been in court all day. Sorry.
I'll take whatever accolade I can get at this point.
Your Honor, Mr. Chairman, after a review of the findings of fact that were provided today by Ms. Goddard, would like to suggest, this number seven, that the commission finds that the proposed development has the potential to further exacerbate the flooding problems on and around Duncan Road, Slickaway Branch, and Glenn's Creek. I think that was very evident in the testimony.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move properly second. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion?
I have a good question. Is this more, it seems like it's more of a development plan question than would be a zoning plan question, because right now it's still farmed, we wouldn't know any impact of the water, this area, until the, until the dump plans come. That's why, that's what I have in question for a second.
I think that's why in the motion, Mr. Lee, I think that's why I said, has the potential to, or may, not that it shall or will, so that it's a possibility, not a sure thing.
Actually, a lot of things, this will be possible. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Ms. Bennett, are you suggesting we just adopt that one separate, or are we amending that paragraph to this?
It would be an amendment of the paragraph. The paragraph was, it said, will further exacerbate. I don't, it's my opinion, and obviously, we can have discussion over this and disagree, but I believe that, again, taking into account what Mr. Lee just said and the testimony that was heard, I do believe it has the potential to, but we don't really know yet, based on the fact there are no buildings there yet.
So we will then pass the will to have potential to, for a red's back?
Whereas the commission finds that the proposed development has the potential to further exacerbate the flooding problems on and around the Duncan Road, Slickaway Branch, and Glenn's Creek water sheds. That's the amendment that has to adopt and as a finding of fact.
Okay, further discussion. Being none, all in favor of the motion, vote aye. Kind of weak. Opposed? Hearing none, motion, motion carries. Are there other findings of fact?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've got a finding of fact, number eight, and this is in reference to, it's been contained and was presented in our packet, sent in by Terry Bradshaw, the president and CEO of the Kentucky Capital Development Corporation, in which it states that this property, or the property in question, is the only future employment center designated property not yet purchased or developed in Franklin County that can be used for industrial development except for a nine-acre parcel on Georgetown-Stedman Town Road, six acres at 421 Chenault Road, and 2.7 acres and 1.2 acre properties in industrial park three. On average, over the past four years, 100 acres annually has been purchased for industrial development or warehousing. This is, there was no, this testimony was undisputed, I believe that this was, should also be read into the finding of fact and at the consideration of the commission.
Is there a second? Chair will second.
I do have a question.
Mr. Lee.
Do you want to amend that to the only, it's not the only piece of land, it's the only proposed? proposed, it's proposed in there, because there is other farms that could be in the same deal, but it's only, it's only proposed?
Not yet purchased, proposed or developed.
You've got that in there? Okay, thank you.
No, I just made it up.
Thank you, to amend it, okay.
I'll second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Aye. Motion carries. Are there other findings of fact?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a suggested or proposed findings of fact, number nine. I anticipate we'll probably garner some discussion. This is also comes from Ms. Bradshaw, in that it was found that Mr. Tierney had not, had done nothing outside the limitations of the Frankfurt Franklin County Planning and Zoning Restrictions or the Frankfurt Franklin County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. His request for a zone change, in fact, fits within the future land use map which designates this area as a future employment center, which allows industrial general zoning. This designation was made in 2001. Again, I believe that this was, throughout the testimony, that this, the fact that there had been no per se violation of the zoning restrictions in and of itself, I believe that this should be, stand as a finding of fact for consideration for, for the commission.
Is there a second? Got a second? Discussion.
Can you repeat that one?
Sure. It was found that Mr. Tierney had done nothing outside the limitations of the Frankfurt Franklin County Planning and Zoning Restrictions or the Frankfurt Franklin County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. His request for a zone change, in fact, fits within the land, future land use map which designates this area as a future employment center which allows industrial general zoning. This designation was made in 2001. I think it was evidence within the staff report, this was discussed in the staff report, this was discussed in some testimony that was brought up. As a finding of fact, I think that it should be, it can, it's not the determinative factor as to how we vote or make our decisions, but it's, to me, I believe it's undisputed that there wasn't a per se violation of regulation, so.
From my opinion, I think the issue of commissioners are that it's not a per se violation. Is it a violation in intent? Possibly. And I think specifically the way that statement is read, it reads that if it's found and they're added to the finding of fact, we agree that there are no findings of fact in intent or in purpose. So I do disagree with this.
Okay, and Madam Secretary, to keep the record straight, Mr. Wright was not in attendance at the previous meeting, so rather than show him as a second, would you please show the chair as a second to that?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion. There is none, all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That sounds like a tie vote at the moment. Can I get a? Madam Secretary, if you would.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
No.
Ms. Cross?
No.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
No.
Mr. Terrell?
No.
And Mr. Jackson?
Yes. Motion fails?
Yes.
All right. Chair will offer as a finding of fact from the envisioned Franklin County submission, the item would read, "The proposed zones change and development would expand the current boundary of development in this area." Move properly second, discussion.
Yes. No discussion, but yes, still your vote. Doesn't jump the gun on that one.
Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries. Hearing none?
No.
You might add one.
Also, that the proposed rezoning would result in developments sprawling onto rural lands in conflict with the goal to of the comp plan, which is to promote infill development in compact urban area. Potential infill sites that would satisfy development have not been identified.
Okay, so that's envisioned, item three A?
To continue on, that the development in front is on the rural landscape that exists between the current industrial park and M2 Woodford County, providing no buffer for the residents
Is there a second?
Second.
Move properly second, that items, really, three A and B.
Item thirteen. Correct. It's the five, five and two.
Two.
Item three A and B. It's not true to discussion, just a reminder, that some of the findings that we are seeing relate to development plan and a review of development plan as opposed to the requirements as outlined in KRS-100 that undergird the decision to rezone or not rezone property. Keep that in mind. All in favor of the motions, vote aye.
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 No.
No.
No. That's a, that's a four-three? Row call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Bennett?
No, may I explain my vote? I just don't believe this is actually within the purview of what we are supposed to look at and the authority that we have as the planning commission, so that, that's why I'm voting no.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Correct, four-three vote.
The finding of fact is adopted. Are there other findings of fact? Okay, chair will entertain a motion that findings of fact cease.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lee?
The motion to find the fact cease.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, do you answer the question?
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I've said enough, Mr. Chairman.
Move them properly second, that findings of fact cease. Madam Secretary, please call row.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The chair will now entertain a motion with regard to a recommendation to fiscal court to either adopt Zone Map Amendment or to not adopt a Zone Map Amendment for the property on, at Duncan Lane.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lee?
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt zone change and recommend, recommend fiscal court to do so based on finding of fact number one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Move them properly second. Discussion. 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 Madam Chairman, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary.
Just got promoted.
Please call, please call row.
Call you, Your Honor. Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
No.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
No.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries with two notes.
Mr. Tierney, the commission has voted in favor of sending a recommendation to fiscal court that your Zone Map Amendment request be granted. And for those who are interested, the next step in the process, for those who are not in support of the recommendation, it's circuit court. Thank you for being here. Madam Secretary, call the next item on the agenda, please.
This is a public hearing. Danny Cox, do you want to wait till the verdict's there?
I'll thank you for your sense of that.
Madam Secretary?
I'm ready when you want it.
Yeah.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Danny Cox is requesting approval of his Zone Map Amendment for rural residential RR to agricultural AG for 28.49 acres of property currently addressed as 4168 and 4170 Lucas Lane, identified as tract one, 17.94 acres, and tract two, 10.55 acres, as shown on the plat of record in plat tablet M, Slide 17, in the office of the Franklin County Clerk. The property is also identified as PVA map number 100-00-00-002.00, and this is a county
Good evening, commission.
First, Mr. Judah, well, by the first, would you state your name and address?
Ben Judah.
And what's your position in the county of Franklin?
I'm planning supervisor.
And as part of the planning supervisor, have you considered an application tonight for Mr. Danny Knox requesting approval of Zone Map Amendment?
Yes.
And is that request rural residential RR to agriculture AG?
Yes.
And did you consider the application and make it your report, no?
Yes.
And is that based upon your training, education, experience in the area of planning?
It is.
Are there any additions or deletions that you may have to your staff report?
No, sir.
Would you briefly give a synopsis for the commission of your considerations in this and the reason for your recommendation?
Yes, sir. So the subject property is 28.49 acres. It is located in the northeast quadrant of the county. It is surrounded by agricultural and residential uses on all four sides, and the surrounding zoning is currently RR for all four sides as well. Is located on the, towards the end of Lucas Lane in a quiet part of the county, and the applicant states that the use will remain for agricultural purposes. Staff has found two findings affect, the comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates the property as rural activities, and the second is the agricultural zoning district is inappropriate zone district for rural activities land use designation. And based upon those two findings, staff recommends that the Zone Map Amendment be approved. I request that my report and testimony be entered into the record, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions?
Have any questions?
Yes, sir.
This is on a less invasive, this is a, this is a step down, not a step up, correct?
In terms of density, yes.
Thank you, that's my question.
Are there other questions of staff? Yes, sir.
Yes, nice property out there, but was there any concerns from any of the neighbors about it suddenly being moved to this?
I have not heard from any of the surrounding property owners.
Other question by commissioners. Just for the record, what agricultural activity would the applicant like to do that's not permitted on the currently zoned property?
The applicant?
As you understand it?
The applicant may be able to give more detail than me. He says he's going to run cattle on there, and there may be some buying and selling of cattle as well, so that activity is more appropriate in agricultural zone than the RR zone. The RR zone does allow for some agricultural uses, but if it's primarily going to be used for ag, then it's appropriate.
Mr. Judah, during your research for this, and this is just for record only, it looks like this property was recently changed from agricultural to RR, and now we're changing it back.
I'm unaware of it changing, but it did recently get replatted.
Okay. Yeah, it's like, Mr. Lusher saying, it seems to be that at one time it would have been agricultural, wouldn't it? I mean, it was, were things originally, and this is, don't reflect mine, I start talking, I'm sure about the history of the zone, but at one time would not, most likely have been agricultural.
It very well may have been used for agricultural purposes.
Then over RR, okay. My question only dealt with the reasoning to change it from AG to RR. According to the application, it said cattle and tobacco until five years ago. I was just curious if you found anything of the reason to change it from AG to RR during your research?
Any additional question of staff? Does the applicant have a question of staff?
No.
Is Charlie there?
No Charlie's in there.
He's over here.
Oh, okay, I didn't see you back there, sir. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we would ask the applicant to please come follow. When you arrive, please state your name and address for the record.
Danny Knox, 4168 Lucas Lane, Frankfurt, currently 220 Tupelo Trail. I'm an apartment temporarily until moving to the park.
Okay, before we get started, Mr. Knox, are you familiar with the staff report?
Um, somewhat.
Have you read it?
Yes, I have read the report.
Is there any aspect of the staff report with which you disagree?
No, sir.
Is there any aspect of the staff report that you believe you need to discuss in any greater detail?
Well, slightly. Mr. Lusher's comment. Mr. Lusher's, um, comment, uh, the reason, uh, another one of the reasons for the zone change, rural residential currently doesn't really, um, doesn't really allow a lot of, um, farm-to-garden type, or garden-to-table type activity. Somewhere, somewhere down the road, I would like the opportunity to maybe grow some produce and things like that, and try to sell to some of the local restaurants and things of that nature. And agriculture is just a little more fitting for some of the things that I'm trying to do with the farm.
Mr. Knox, do you know why your property was? Nature of my question was more of an impact on neighboring properties, because it does appear that that property was agricultural, at some point was purchased, then turned to rural residential, but never developed.
Correct. Yes, it, it has a tobacco basin on it. It was one large farm that was separated, I believe, last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it's very, very recent, no developments?
No, just the, uh, just the separation of the, the properties.
Okay.
Okay, that's the second time that question has come up, so if I can interrupt your presentation for just a moment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, do you have any enlightenment with regard to that? The question?
Mr. Logan, shall I be qualified prior to hearing?
You filed your V to have your not?
Yes, sir.
And you're still employed with the county, are you not?
Yes.
And have you participated in, with regard to this zone change?
Yes.
And are you familiar with current, or current or anticipated changes with regard to agriculture?
Yes. To address the question specific to the, whether or not this was agricultural zoning prior, and why it's going back and forth, I've been with the county for 13 years. In my experience in reviewing this portion of the county zoning map, and having looked at real estate in that area in recent history, I'm unaware of it ever being zoned agricultural. It's often confused that agricultural activities occur, and it's assumed that agricultural zoning exists when it does not, when in fact it's rural residential with agricultural activities allowed as a permitted right in that district. When zoning was adopted in October of 1987 in Franklin County, in order to allow individuals with homes on large tracts of land to be insured that they can still live there, their property was zoned rural residential, which allowed for agricultural activities for tracts of land over five acres. So with that being said, individuals have come before this body and before the Fiscal Court requesting an agricultural zoning, oftentimes for the tax breaks that the PVA office allows for, and then also other incentives that the federal government can, can provide for having livestock and things of that nature. So agricultural zoning assists them in, in some financial incentives in that respect. But, that, that's my understanding in my review of the map, and that's why the request is before you to go to an agricultural zoning. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you come on back to, I mean, we, we won't hurt you. Now, is there anything else that you believe you need to elaborate on?
No, sir.
Well, in lieu of any further testimony, unless there are questions, other questions by Commission members, or Mr. Logan acting on behalf of the staff, do you have any questions?
No.
Then, sir, we'll ask you if you would mind stepping back to your seat, and we'll
Yes, sir.
take your inquiry under consideration.
Thank you.
Now, there's a question that I do need to ask you as staff attorney, Mr. Logan. Has there been sufficient additional testimony that would prevent this item from being considered?
It is close. It is close, but no one believed you could consider it tonight, because we asked for additional explanations, that's why no testimony came out. Which usually does delay the decision, but I don't think it was that sufficient tonight, in my opinion.
Yeah, yours is sufficient. Chair will entertain a motion
Sure.
to close the public hearing, adopt the testimony from the public hearing as a summary, and to take action on the issue at this meeting. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman. We're closing the closed vote hearing. We adopt the staff report as a summary. And we recommend for approval of the zone change to Fiscal Court based on findings of fact one and two, it's on page, page, page 12 of the staff report.
Second.
Moved properly second. Discussion on the motion, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of, of the motion, please vote as the secretary called Rose.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Honaker?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Motion's adopted. I like the way you combined it, Mr. Lee.
Learned from a lot of really good people. Got a lot over to that one.
I remember that, that, that resemble their remark, huh? Mr. Knox, based upon the motion by Mr. Lee and the action of this Commission, your request has been recommended to be submitted to Fiscal Court with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Secretary?
Yes. The next item of business is a public hearing, Colonial Properties and Builders Limited, Inc. Care of Charles E. Jones is requesting approval of a Zone Map Amendment from Professional Office District to General Commercial District, CG, for the property located at 702-706 East Main Street. The properties can be more specifically identified as PVA map numbers 074-41-08-011.00, also 074-41-08-010.00, and this is a city item.
George, you state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Jordan Miller.
Jordan Miller, what's your position in City Franklin?
Senior Planner.
And how long have you been Senior Planner for City Franklin?
Five years.
With regard to your position, have you considered an application tonight for Colonial Properties and Builders Limited?
Yes, I have.
For a Zone Map Amendment?
Yes, I have.
And have you made a recommendation with regard to that?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that recommendation based upon the training, education, experience in the area of planning?
Yes, sir.
And are there any additions or deletions to the report as submitted to the Commission?
No, sir.
And what was your recommendation?
Approval.
Would you give a brief summary to the Commission of the basis for your recommendation somehow of a approval?
Yes, sir. All right. The subject properties are located at the corner of Aspen Avenue and East Main Street. These properties are planted in three separate lots, and they comprise about three-quarters of an acre together, and they have about 210 feet of frontage along East Main Street, which is a minor arterial. The applicant is requesting to amend the zoning for these properties from PO Professional Office to CG General Commercial. The PO zoning district restricts retail land uses, and the applicant would like the option to utilize the existing retail strip center for retail uses. Staff distributed the request to the technical review team for facility review, and there were no comments which would prohibit this requested zone change. Those comments are attached at the end of your staff report as well. Staff suggests seven findings of fact which can be found on page seven of your staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commu- Commission approve the request and recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the Zone Map Amendment based upon the facts within the staff report on the principal finding that the zone change does satisfy the requirements of KRS 100.213, specifically that the map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. I'd like my report and testimony to be entered to the record, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have to.
Questions by Commissioners? Ms. Miller, just for clarification, the three pieces of property that we have there do back up to residential dwellings, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And kind of talk about how quote-unquote development of those three pieces of property impacts the residential uses that are immediately behind them.
So, currently, there are two existing structures. The applicant has not proposed to do any new development to the properties. They will all be contained within the existing buildings. This property is also abutted directly across the street by CG Properties, which also abut RC, the same zoning district that this one does as well. Staff also did distribute this to the traffic consultant, and they didn't find any adverse impacts on traffic they generate on the neighborhood.
For, for, ma'am, we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to speak soon. For example, before your tenure with this office, the animal hospital that's across the street from the proposed development requested an opportunity to create a crematory. Would the proposed action before us tonight offer an opportunity to create a crematory on either of those locations?
Would it allow for crematory?
Yeah.
For animals or people might be a difference.
Well, if you bury them. I'm not exactly sure what would be there, but the request was for animals. And our decision at that point was no, but...
Correct.
And a permitted use charge.
Don't you wrong, make it plain.
How'd you already go about it?
It's like, it's for people. I knew you were looking for business.
I'm sorry.
Sharon Jackson, that's him, too. In that area.
Crematories are not specifically listed in the permitted use table in the zoning ordinance, so going from the fly about what we would have to make some interpretations about in the event that somebody attempted to is a little bit difficult. I can tell you that medical offices and other things which are similar uses to a veterinary's office would potentially be permitted. Separate from the question of a crematorium, whether that be an accessory use to a veterinary office or its own.
And that was just, again, that was just an example of some of the things that might be permitted in, 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 in commercial general use that we might want to be concerned about. That's all.
And unfortunately, I was also not here when that case came, so I don't have a point of reference for how that was processed, but...
Okay, but, FYI, they are permitted in the industrial Are there other questions by Commissioners with regard to Mr. Miller's report? Does the applicant have a question of Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller? May retire until we need you again. Would the applicant please come forward?
Mr. Chairmembers, this is Charlie Jones here on behalf of the applicant. We have read staff report, agree with staff report, and have no further findings on the, on staff report. I would say my client is certainly agreeable to a zone change that's conditioned on no crematory, never be there. Otherwise, we have nothing to add, but answer any questions you have.
Are there?
I can correct my previous statement, by the way. The, I did, I had, in my haste, I had overlooked crematory. In the permitted use table, Mr. Jackson is correct, it is permitted in the IC and IG zone, and is not permitted in the CG zone.
Certainly won't do it.
Ricky, and you have nothing further you need to add to the staff report?
No, sir.
Are there questions? Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, this property borders, uh, East Main Street's got a retaining law. Is the plan for the interest to still remain on Aspen?
Yes, there's no planned redevelopment of property at all. It'll remain exactly as it is.
Thank you. Answer my question.
And we understand any redevelopment, but that development plan would have to return to you.
Are there other questions by Commissioners?
One, one question, Mr. Jones. Based on the reported recommendation, first page, it says that this current property currently has Professional Office, PO, and General Commercial, CG? No. Okay, so it's going from just PO to CG? Yes, totally, both, all properties are zone PO. We're asking for all to be rezoned Commercial General. Okay, so that's the re-zonings to CG. Yes.
Other questions by Commissioners? Seeing none, hearing none, the staff has a question of the applicant? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Jones, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you. Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir.
Same question as before. Has there been sufficient?
I don't know if the audience had the test effect.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I'm a little late, I think, that wanted to address.
Yeah, I, I, my mistake, I apologize. If you would come forward, please, and, and once you reach the podium, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tommy Posey. It's T-O-M-I-P-O-S-E-Y. I live at 711 Fairview Avenue. And my question is, what exactly are you guys planning on doing in my backyard?
The offices that are there will continue that use. My client has other properties on East Main. They are fully rented. There is some, he believes some demands and need along that corridor, small retail space. So he wants opportunity to come along, about to occur.
Well, I, I know that, that old triplex there has Ark of Kentucky, and they just opened the consignment shop. And I don't know if the other space is rented out or not.
Don't think so, so it, it would just...
Is it just that triplex that is in?
It's those two buildings. There's the house-like structure, and the, the structure next door 2,000 square foot building and a 1,200 square foot building.
Okay.
So it would just be those.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a fence, but those can be cut, jumped, whatever. I want to make sure that we're not gonna have people at midnight coming through our backyard for a general commercial business, 'cause I'm not worried so much about the crematorium as I am the strip club.
They will agree not for the strip club, yeah.
I think that's fair. It's fair.
All I can say is, Mr. Jones, on this property...
for 21 more years, and they own other properties in the area. They look, I think, very respectful of joint property owners. I don't foresee that to be an issue.
All right, I just wanted to make sure what was here, and I was off today, so...
And again, the size limits the use, so they can't do a big retail operation. There's not a rent of parking to accommodate it.
Okay, that was my other question was about the parking. And you guys said you're not going to change any of the structures or anything, so...
No.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Posey?
Yes.
If you would, if you'll hold on just a second. I must ask my commissioners
I'm sorry.
if they have a question of you.
Okay.
No, ma'am, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ma'am? Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir.
Given the additional conversation, are we still good?
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing to adopt the staff report as a summary of the public hearing and to take action on this item at tonight's meeting.
All right. No, whoever wants to make the motion. Yes, I do recommend that we close the hearing, adopt the staff report, and move for approval of this motion.
Second?
Second.
I would just add, recommend the city commissioners approval of this motion.
I'd like to add, Mr. Jones, amendments to the motion to recommend to the city commissioners for approval.
Second? All right. Now, the motion is, close the public hearing, adopt the staff report as a summary of the public hearing, adopt the six findings on page seven of this report as finding the fact and recommend to the city commission approval of the request for zone change amendment. We have a second. And we're going to ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Honaker?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay. Colonial Properties and Builders, your request to ask City Commission to adopt the zone map amendment for the three properties that were identified in your request? Good luck.
Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Chairman? Can we see together the next two items combined, please?
I think we can do that.
Three sections, that under one deed?
It doesn't cause a problem to combine them?
I don't think so, as long as the commission doesn't decide to put them up and vote on one another.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question, there's been those three pieces of property, is that under one deed?
Are they a single deed?
Yes, it's actually an application.
Okay. We're good, okay. So Mr. Lee made a motion to combine the next two items on our agenda.
Second.
Move properly, second. Just their discussion on the motion. Hearing done, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Hearing done, motion carried. And we'll call Eric.
Would you like me to move in? Would you like me to move in?
Yes, ma'am.
Public hearing, the City of Frankfurt's staff, planning staff is requesting approval of a text amendment to Article 1907 of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance to amend the language regarding home occupations. And staff is requesting approval of a text amendment to Articles 4.114, 4.124, 4.134, and 4.144 of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance to add street-side setbacks.
Eric, you previously have testified on behalf of the City of Frankfurt, and have you previously filed a deal with the board?
I have.
In your position as head of planning for the City of Frankfurt, have you prepared staff reports on the two public hearings and items that have requested for approval of a text amendment?
I have.
And what is your recommendation with regard to both of those items?
I would recommend that the commission forward their recommendation of approval to the board of commissioners.
Are there any specifics, synopsis, or facts that you could relay to the commission as to the basis of this recommendation?
Sure. In short, the one text amendment is related to the city's home occupation regulations. It's generally governed, the standards by which folks can run businesses at their homes. The purpose of the amendment is mainly to do two things. First, to simplify interpreting those regulations to make it easier for staff and for homeowners to understand what can and can't be allowed. And then, second, this will also allow us to bring our regulations to match the county's regulations. Some of you may recall, this amendment is almost entirely the same as a text amendment we processed a few years ago to the county zoning ordinance. So now our home occupation regulations, with a couple minor differences, will largely be the same. The other text amendment is to add street-side setbacks. For reference, what this allows us to do, typically, the front and rear yards are the most stringent required setbacks. And the setback, of course, is the amount of space you have to have between a property line and a proposed structure or other things in the built environment that we may regulate. Fences, for example. Adding a side setback, which is slightly less restrictive, a street-side setback, I should say, than a front yard setback allows for in cases when you might have a corner lot, for example, which we would generally have to treat as having two front yards, which severely limits, makes it hard to build upon those lots. A street-side setback on whichever of those frontages isn't principal as defined in the zoning ordinance allows us to make that lot slightly more usable and flexible for homeowners in those districts in terms of the construction of their home. And more often, I find that what this is helpful is for fencing, because our regulations specify that privacy fencing, for example, can't be in a front yard. If you have a corner lot and you'd like to privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence, your rear yard, then we would have to make you pull that fence pretty far back from a road, and you lose a lot of usable area in that, what you would consider your backyard. So it's helpful in that regard. Once again, this, as some of you may recall, matches changes that we made to the county ordinance several years ago. So this helps, again, for us to have some of that continuity between the two jurisdictions, so people understand what the rules are. If you have any questions?
On the one, what was the response of your zoning ordinance update committee when presented?
This was presented to the committee in January, and I believe they all, as I recall unanimously, supported the recommendation.
Questions by commissioners? Hearing done. We just need a motion to close the public hearing, adopt the staff report as the summary, and all the other staff that Mr. Lee suggested.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion at this time to close the public hearing to adopt the staff reports on items identified in the agenda three and four regarding the zoning ordinance amendments. And go ahead and recommend approval of these zoning ordinances based on those finding of facts in the staff report to the city commissioners.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move properly, second. Discussion on the motion, discussion on the motion, discussion on the motion. Hearing done, Madam Secretary?
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Honaker?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Harry's all in favor.
Mr. Chairman, being up there on the agenda, unless you have something else you'd like to...
There's one thing that we, one thing that we need to do on the way out. We'll ask Eric if he would give us a thumbnail sketch, because City Commission and fiscal court met together to talk about the development of parcels B, C, and D. Kind of tell us where we are with that and how the new zoning that we put in place as it relates to the area around parcel B, C, and D is going to play a role in that development. And then we'll entertain a motion to go home.
As Mr. Jackson said, Monday evening, the city and county had a joint meeting. Part of the, well, the entire purpose for the joint portion of their meeting was to have the development team, if you will, for parcel B and C come, share with both bodies in a public forum, and so also to share with the public their general concept for development of those properties. And also to start offering, to start a discussion about the city and the county considering negotiations to put that area into a TIF district. So following that presentation, I believe that both bodies will be starting to investigate what that might look like and whether they will choose to participate in a TIF district. And I'm not sure if the commission is familiar with the concept. I can give you a brief overview of that, if you like.
Next meeting.
At any rate, it's a tax incentive for the development of the property. As I let them know at that meeting at that time, regardless of whatever incentives the city or county may, or arrangements they may agree to, this project, much like every other development project from the private sector, will be required to achieve a zone change, development plan approval, things of that nature. So at the very least, a zone change would be coming to this commission. As Mr. Jackson referenced, we, I guess, about a year ago now, approved the text for our urban mixed-use zoning district. I think with an eye on hopes that perhaps the developer of this property would consider using that. It is my expectation that that's what's going to happen. Of course, they can do what they wish, but based upon my understanding of their concept and things of that nature, that's what I expect to occur in the coming months.
Do you foresee there being any other required participation of the planning commission? And where I'm going with that is that if there are other meetings being held by fiscal court and the city commission, would it be, Mr. Logan, okay for planning commission members to attend those meetings as private citizens or whatever do you think that would enter into a consideration as to whether or not?
Certainly, I want to encourage participation. I'm thinking that it should be done on a very limited basis, like designating a committee to maybe participate, because you're going to have to make the decision. And if you are taking in outside information prior to getting there, you're going to have a roomful of people that are going to be really, really upset and rightly so. So, I mean, you're going to get it. It's just you've got to get it when it's being referred to you rather than just saying, hey, I want to show you how to do it before it gets here.
And so what I would reiterate is, once again, that because we don't exactly know what the timeframe may be for whatever the city and county may do in regards to this TIF. But that will have its own schedule, possibly. So it could be that the public sees and hears of things happening in regard to that prior to it coming to this body. So I would just suggest to the commissioners that if we're having, you know, having things read about in the paper from other public meetings, and people think, hey, I thought it was going to come to you. It looks like this project has a go or whatever, just to repeat, no, it will still have to come to us. The planning commission has not approved anything. Planning staff, you know, it hasn't administratively approved a development plan. All of that still has to come to this body.
Okay. Do y'all have, sorry, do you all have any inquiries of Mr. Hockley or Mr. Logan?
Do not.
I do not.
Okay. Where's Jerry?